Students, subgroups, students of color, students with disabilities, students who are below grade level, our English language learners. So, Jesse, can you go back for one sec? So basically, oh, I already said, so 6.8 million is 20% of the 34 million. So 6.8 million has to go towards, towards what I just mentioned about the learning loss. So, other additional requirements and background information of S R three. This plan is for F Y 22 and F I 23. We need to focus on projects and program that are sustainable and will not require funding after F Y 23. So, you know, with this, you know, you can add a little bit of staff, but you really should be adding programs, materials for teachers to make their job easier, upgrades to facilities, things that won't have to be laid off as we know the, you know, budgets ebb and flow and when they go down, you know, this 34 million is not going to continue to come in. It's like when we used to have the, what was the A A R A money that came in? I think that was under George Bush and then that went away. And again, as you know, what happened to us after, after that. So, so we really want to look at things that do not require additional funding after F Y 23. So here's our big three that we're proposing to you, our three big budget areas. And again, the 6.8 million for the pandemic-related learning loss. And that, I'll go over what that would include. And then evidence-based strategies, interventions and supports, allocating 9.2 million of the 34 million for that. And again, I'll go over that. And then a lot of this, as we stated, is long overdue repairs to our HVAC systems and our facilities. And we're looking for about $18 million worth of that because we have, there's a lot of things that we have put off, a lot of things, as you know, because you've set the budgets that we have not been able to do with our facilities because we just haven't had the money. And we had to put it towards obviously saving, saving teachers, saving staff when we had poor budgets and, you know, to kind of stop the bleeding and not lay as many people off. So those are three big budget areas. So the learning loss, and again, this is the 6.4 million is the accelerated academies, that's after-school programs, that's vacation programs, that's all the summer programs, academic summer programs, we do not want students paying for anymore. We want to make sure that they get those acceleration academies at no cost. The after-school tutoring program, again, no cost, extra learning time based on student need. So, you know, some schools now have extended learning time and that is not cheap, it's very expensive. And I think we propose extended learning time for students that really need it, after-school programs for them, not only about academics, but also about social, emotional support, mentoring, some enrichment programs for, you know, so we can get kids connected and again, accelerate their learning. Early college programs is a big one. As you, as you know, you've, you've heard reports of students now within an early college program can graduate high school with a associate's degree. I think that's really important for our kids, especially our families with the cost of college being so expensive for them to be able to get out of high school with at least, you know, with a two-year associate's degree where usually their general ed requirements are, are out of the way. It's a big savings for families. So dropout prevention and recovery programs. I recommend that we open a new dropout prevention center. Boston has one. I think that's somewhere we need to open now that we have a lot of pathways. You need to go out and find the kids who have dropped out, get them back into the school system and make sure we put them in programs where they're going to earn that diploma. Or, and then once they do, we should have career paths for those who don't want to go to college. We need to have, you know, the career and tech path where there's so many jobs, well-paying jobs, that we have to help prepare our students for. Transitional programs for students with mental health or behavioral-related absences. So, you know, this now is a big problem with students coming back to school. We are dealing with a lot of issues, a lot of behavior issues, a lot of conflict. And we have to put more resources towards fixing that and helping students, support them and also helping teachers that have to deal with those behaviors on a day-to-day basis. Again, after-school programs, that's, that's not only academic programs, that's enrichment programs, that's clubs, drama clubs, that's sports, that's, you know, things that kids love to do that keep them connected to school. Those are important as well. And again, enrichment programs with our community partners. A lot of our community partners like Sabora, the Y, the Boys and Girls Club run some really good programs and, you know, this money could be used to partner with them, to do programs with them as well. And especially that, you know, with the Goddard set up as a community center, still going strong, funding can go over there as well for supporting not only our students but our families as well. So the second bucket of money was to provide evidence-based strategies and interventions and supports. Again, this is upgrades and improvement to curriculum to accelerate learning. The Department of Ed has used, they're not using remediation, it's about acceleration to get kids back. So this is, again, making sure our teachers have the tools that are necessary to be able to have them, was in front of them to support their, their instruction in the student learning. So we really do need to continue to upgrade our curriculum. And as you know, I think out of S R two, we've spent about five million in curriculum and there's at least another five million to spend, especially at the secondary level, to really upgrade the, the resources that teachers are using. And then professional development for teachers and including, but not limited to culturally responsive teaching, screening assessments to gauge where kids are, co-teaching and inclusion models, develop a leadership pipeline for teachers to move into administrative roles, diversify the workforce with innovative recruitment and retention strategies. Again, the key here is, as you know, we did a great job this year hiring a more diverse teacher population, but it's retention that we really have to spend time on. Establishing, establishing steering committees so teachers can work together to share best practices and make their individual departments or grade levels better. And then offer parent engagement, community-based learning academies where parents, we can spend a lot of time with parents, helping them get involved and really providing them with professional development, how to support this, their students, their children and how to support their, their children's teachers as well. So the community-based piece is important, that's why we have the community center and that has to be expanded. And then this one, again, a big one is to create a healthy and safe school environment. Facility upgrades that are long overdue and especially our, as you know, the average age of our buildings is 50 years or older. Facilities upgrade, HVAC replacement at multiple schools and buildings. This is something that has to be done immediately at the Downey School. That HVAC system is being held together with duct tape and Band-Aids and rubber bands and we can't get replacement parts and that needs to be changed. So we, I know Dr. Cobb's is bringing in an engineer to work on that. Obviously, we have a, we do have a application in for Broton High School for MSBA, but as you know, that anytime the first hammer or the first, the groundbreaking would be seven years from now if we get into that program. So there is work that has to be done here without waiting for a major renovation. What's that? That's okay. So, and then modular classrooms to expand the capacity of, of the building. So you look at our modular classrooms now, you have, you know, the Hancock School, they're in terrible shape, they need to be replaced and more space needs to be created. You know, South needs modular classrooms. You know, you go through the list, I think there's like eight schools that we need modular classrooms. These have a 30-year shelf life. We really need space. It's not only about classroom space, it's about meeting space for teachers. Unfortunately, now some teachers are meeting in hallways for common planning time, some are meeting under stairwells, it's just, there's just not enough space. So this is important. Again, this is something that would last, you know, 30, 40 years they'll be here for. And then again, adding classroom space as we, part of this is adding another 10 pre-K classrooms. This would be for next year so we can get to full-day pre-K. And then complete long overdue needed renovations, as you know, especially in, you look at the old four junior highs, the middle schools, east, west, north and south, you know, they need major renovations with, especially cosmetic ceilings, carpet needs to be replaced with tile. As you can see, some of the tiles chipping up, some, the shelving is old, you know, we, we really need to upgrade. Again, not only those, you got the Hancock, you got the Brookfield, the Kennedy, you know, this just Huntington, you know, the older schools that really need, we got rooms here at the high school that the carpets were so bad, we had to rip them up, but we haven't had time or money to replace them with tile. So that all has to be done so people aren't on concrete. So those are, that's why a lot of this money, and actually when the parents responded to the survey, they, most parents put that they wanted to see facility upgrades and that's important. So, so this is, actually Sharon Walda sent this to me late today. So, and this is a pretty, it's amazing graphic. So the reason we need to really put money towards the learning loss and the social, emotional well-being of kids, if you look at this, the last time we had a normal school year, so kindergarten, first grade, second grade, they never had a normal school year. So all the students right now in the kindergarten, in kindergarten first and second grade have not experienced a normal school year. The last time a fourth grader did was in grade one, fifth grader, grade two, a third grader was, a sixth grader was grade three, seventh grade, grade four, eighth grade, grade five, and a ninth grader, this year's ninth grade, the last time they had a normal school year was grade five. So, you know, it's, it's an amazing stat. Sharon sent this to me and it is, it is pretty, you know, incredible that it's been, you know, it's, it's been, these students have now, especially if you look at high school students, I mean, it's so important for that, that transition from eighth to ninth grade is the, and I spent 10 years here at the high school and we always struggled with freshmen, struggled with behavior, struggled with their grades. And those were normal times. And now you're talking about, you know, ninth graders, that the last time they had a normal school year, you know, was, you know, they were in the sixth grade, a normal full school year. So if you count, you know, their seventh grade year, it, it wasn't a normal year because they were sent out of school on March 20th. So, you know, I'll email this out so everybody has it, but it's pretty powerful. And I think that's why, you know, this money is, is needed and this, you know, and it also explains why, you know, we are dealing with a lot of behavior issues, a lot of students coming back together, a lot of conflict, fights, those things, you know, and I've spoken to many other superintendents. I spoke to a few of my urban superintendent colleagues who are dealing with the exact same things at their high schools and a lot of their middle schools. And, you know, we just have to continue to, you know, people, kids have to be held accountable for their behavior, but we also have to understand that, you know, they are really struggling, coming back together and they've suffered a lot of loss, a lot of learning loss, they've suffered a lot of personal loss and so hasn't our staff. So, you know, this money's going to be really helpful to help us recover. But it's going to be, it's going to be a long process, it's going to be a long process. So I can sit back now, we can, Aldo can, me and Aldo can answer any questions you have.
All right. Any questions from the members of the committee? Mr. Minicello.
Hi, Mr. Superintendent. How did, how did the ratio of monies to spend, how did that basically be, how was that divided? Because it looks like half of it's going towards, you know, facilities and fixing facilities and then the other half is being divided between the two, two.
Those two areas. Well, six point, Jess, can you put that slide back out? You still got that on? Or do I have it here?
We don't, we don't have a copy of this, right? Anywhere?
I don't know if we have, did we print our copies? We'll, we'll get it to you, I'll make sure we print them out. So basically the six point, is it 6.8? 6.8 million needs to be spent, that's, and that's dictated by the state and federal government. 6.8 million of the 34 has to be sent for accelerated programs, tutoring programs, academic programs over the summer, vacation schools, tutoring after school, special programs, pulling out kids for extra reading, those kinds of things have to be in place for, that has to be put towards the learning loss for COVID.
Is that generally across the board or is that for the subgroups that were identified?
No, that's for everybody.
Okay.
That's for everybody. You, you need to focus on the subgroups that are really struggling.
Okay. So then, so then the other, what about what, 7. something or 8 million?
7.4, I think it was.
7.7 million. Basically, those two areas make it a half and then the other, and the other half is spent on buildings and facilities.
Would be spelt on facilities.
So then how, how did you guys decide, you know, not to spend more money on the second area?
Well, it was, was the, again, this is what is up for discussion. I mean, we haven't decided anything yet because this is a committee and joint decision.
I'm not criticizing.
Oh, no, no, I just.
I just want to figure out.
It's basically.
What thought process went into, you know, is this enough money towards?
The 9.2, Jess, if you can go to those evidence-based, so this comes right from the Department of Ed, they give you a list of things that you're allowed to spend the money on. So again, this is about the curriculum, as we've always know, we've cut that drastically over the years. It's upgrading curriculum, we still, you know, June and her team is, you know, they did a good job of, you know, picking, you know, there's a lot of curriculum we've added. We've added 5 million over the last two years, but there's still a ton left to do. I mean, you know, we.
So I guess, the question, I guess, is, are we putting enough into this area or is, you know?
Well, I, the good thing, Tom, is that, so a lot of the curriculum, so when we do the budget with the SOA money, that, the good news is we were only down six students from last year's October 1st number, which is great, meaning that the SOA money that we're getting, which would probably be equivalent to what we got last year, would probably give us about 15 million to spend. Usually you take all of this out of the local budget. So basically, professional development, I, Aldo, what's the average professional development budget every year?
For the whole district?
For the whole district? All right. Yeah, so, so all of that, so upgrades the curriculum, so that's basically 3, 4 million, which would be taken, put on S R three and put back into the local. Same with the professional development, I mean, it ends up 250, I'm thinking Aldo, it ends up, at the end of the year, it ends up being about 500. The leadership pipeline, those are programs we have in place that's paid out of the local budget. The diversity, that's about the retention strategies. I think we put about 250,000 in the budget this year for that. Steering committees, they're usually about 300,000 a year for steering committees that we have work on, picking curriculum and best practices. So, you know, a lot of this would be taken out of the local budget, put on S R three so we would have flexibility with, with next year's, you're going to have much more, more flexibility in the Student Opportunity Act money next year.
So I guess what I, I just want to feel comfortable with is that we are aligning or spending in this category to address the deficiencies that were pointed to by the, by the state in that, in that review. So I just want to make sure that.
Yes.
What is being spent is in relation to the.
District review.
Exactly. And so, so I want to make sure that, you know, that I'm not going to, we're not going to, as a body, be faced later on with, well, you've spent half of it on facilities and you should have spent more of it on this category as opposed to facilities and that's why you're not making the progress that we feel you should make. Or maybe this is sufficient. All I'm looking for is some assurance or, you know, I guess, evidence, because that's what they, you know, evidence, you know, direct evidence that we are correlating the monies to spend with where we're supposed to be spending them based on the district review report. So, you know, so I guess.
Yeah, so basically.
Is there someone from, I guess, teaching and learning at some point that can walk us through and say, okay, here's the district review, here's what we're doing, this is all, this is, this is a appropriate expenditure of this money towards addressing these areas that have been pointed out that needed to be evidence-based, what was the term mark?
Evidence-based, data, or database decisions.
Yeah, database decisions.
Or data-driven, data-driven decisions, yep.
There you go, okay. You know what I'm saying. So, so just to make sure we're corresponding the money spent with the, with solving a problem.
I'm with you.
As opposed to opening ourselves up later on, that you spent half of it on facilities and you should have spent two-thirds on this and one-third on facilities, you know what I'm saying? I just need to, I just need.
Yeah, and I think that if we weren't getting Student Opportunity Act money, I would, I would recommend that more money goes through to, you know, but this is a lot of money for, but with the, with the facility needs that we have, I, I just don't know how we can let this money pass by without, if we didn't, and I agree with you, if we weren't getting the Student Opportunity Act money, which is for another six years, right Aldo? Five more, well, next, this year and five more. Yeah, so we have five more years of student opportunities. So we have the Student Opportunity Act plan, which we did base that around the needs of the district review because we put that in last year. So they've been, they're making us do all these plans. So now you got S R three plans. So, you know, basically I, we didn't really want to put things in that we weren't able to fund beyond F Y 23. And that's why we wanted to make sure it went towards professional development, again, all-around district review and improving student achievement, steering committees, curriculum, and I think facilities, you know, this is the opportunity we have to upgrade facilities that are in desperate need of upgrading because I think a lot of issues, you know, is, you know, the environment kids learn in and some, some places just aren't in good shape. But I agree with what you're saying, absolutely.
I mean, I'm not implying that we're doing anything.
Oh, yeah.
Unbalanced. I just want assurance that we are making a balanced, data-driven decision on the money so that we are addressing adequately professionally the district review.
Yep.
Concerns by the state. That's all, you know, so that the city is viewed by the state as doing what needs to be done to improve the scores of our student body.
Yep, I agree.
Right, but this is federal money, correct?
Yeah, it flows through, it does, it comes right to us by Title I? Yeah, it comes directly to the, but the department obviously wants to attach what they think.
Oh, sure, absolutely.
Everything is here, and actually what they put out is recommendations.
Right.
So there's nothing in here that Desi and I've spoken to them, there's nothing in here that goes against their recommendation. Like they tell you, this is the things you, you need to consider spending your money on to improve student performance.
Well, what you said was important that just jumped out at me to Mr. Minicello's point is you have spoken to them about where we're planning to allocate this money. So.
That's also in line with the Student Opportunity Act plan.
Right.
Which is all based on how to improve the district after the district review.
Right, of course.
But this, with the Student Opportunity Act plan, that's more sustainable by budget-wise because it's good for another five years and, I mean, and I mean, the law is they have to keep funding that after five years.
Right, the increases.
The increase is supposed to continue because of the new funding formula.
Right, and then, although this is a good question, so at the end of five years, it's not supposed to go away, it may plateau.
May plateau and that, the only reason they said five years is because they have to, they didn't want to do what they did with Ed reform, wait 20 years to fix the formula again.
Right.
They wanted to do it every, well, they were seven years at first, right Aldo? It was seven, the law was seven years. And then we lost a year for COVID.
Right.
So then they agreed to fund it for the next six, but that's only because they have to relook at the formula after six so they don't do, make the mistake they made under Ed reform of 93 where they didn't look at the formula for 20 years and, and that's why we had 16 million dollar cuts.
Right, and I think that's an important point as compared with this, where this is a three-year, it's, it's gone, we know it's gone, where the, the SOA.
It's actually only two years, if you look, I mean, not, again, the good thing is, we really don't need a lot of it for this year, other than starting to do facility upgrades.
Right.
The rest of it would be for, you know, you know, well, some of it you're going to use for this year for the vacation academies, the steering committees, the curriculum upgrades, some of that stuff we will be buying this year, F Y 22, but it only then can be used for, next year, F Y 23. That's why you can't, like.
Can't do long-term things with this.
You can't see, you can't put 100 staff members in this.
No.
Because it's just, the staff members we did while we're in through S, Student Opportunity Act money.
Right, we got to look at the SOA as the long-term.
Right.
Funding and hopefully they keep adjusting it appropriately.
So Jess, can you go back to the first, the pandemic-related? So again, these, these are the big ones that not only is, are going to address learning loss, but also tied to student performance in, in the district review, acceleration academies. This comes directly from the Department of Ed, they, and I'll get this to you on, in Friday's packet, they've developed a acceleration roadmap. You cannot call it remediation, it's acceleration. And there's a whole, you know, we're going to be doing professional development around that to make sure, you know, everybody understands the difference between acceleration and remediation. Tutoring is huge, as you know, last year we did that virtual tutoring program, it really was successful. We want to expand that not only for virtually, but after school. So, you know, remember how many years ago that we cut out all the middle school, after school programs where there was no more tutoring? And now that's all back and can be funded, extended learning time based on the student needs. So basically we have to identify the students who are really below grade level and put a program in place after school and before school for them to accelerate and get them back where they need to be, at least at grade level and beyond. The dropout, early college is usually, I mean, this is, you know, we need to fund this because we were being left behind in early college. As you can see, the New Whites had the article this year that they graduated, I think 50 of their students graduated with.
55.
Yeah, 55 graduated with the associate's degrees and I think we need to, I have a partnership starting with UMass Dartmouth that will help our kids get into this program and it would be funded through S R three where the students aren't paying 150 dollars a credit, it'd be covered by us. Dropout prevention, again, this is, we've, we've seen dropouts have gone up because of COVID. We need to do something to bring them back and get them into our programs. And then transitional programs for students with mental health and behavior. I mean, you could see a few positions here with mentors, with a few more adjustment counselors, but not like a drastic, you know, increase. And then again, we talked about this, the after-school programs and then enrichment programs, especially at our community center for programs for families to kind of help them, help their kids recover from COVID.
Sorry, I cut you off, I apologize. As we all recall, during the budget process for, for a couple of years, we would kid Mrs. Sabo McGuire about her wish list, right? Remember her wish list of all the different increases to curriculum or updates of curriculum to bring us, you know, up to par with other systems that have been showing improvement? I guess what I'm saying is, you know, where the identified subgroups such as ELA and, and special ed, to name just a couple, you know, the focus, I guess, should be to make sure that those subgroups have the resources, curriculum materials, whatever it is, you know, best up-to-date materials to position those groups in the best position to increase and improve their learning process and their learning skills. So, so, you know, that, that's, you know, the only motivation I have in terms of asking these questions. The other thing, I was, I just, just lost my train of thought, when you get over 50, this is what happens to you. But, but, yeah, so I guess I'll, I'll basically.
You're right, that, that middle area with the seven point, Jess, can you go back to that, the allocations? So that evidence-based strategy interventions, that middle area is where you're going to see a big chunk of the curriculum upgrades for where they're needed. I mean, a lot of it has already been done, but a lot still needs to be done with curriculum with, for English language learners, curriculum items and materials for our students with disabilities. curriculum items and materials for our students with disabilities, the steering committees to professional development. You know, that's where that big chunk, I mean, you know, we'll be looking at a new ELA curriculum for K to five soon. You know, that's, that's, comes with about a $4 million price tag, and we wanna make sure that, you know, it's coming from here. We really need to upgrade, and again, I said this, and I was in a workshop with Desi this past summer, and I saw, you know, they had a statistic on, and this was for statewide, and only, only 12% of the school districts in the state upgrade their secondary curriculum every 10 years, which is high school, which is embarrassing, actually. So, we, districts do a lot with their, you know, K to five curriculum and a little bit more, it gets a little bit less. They upgrade their K to five curriculum, and I forget the, like, 35% every 10 years, 35% of the districts will upgrade their K to five curriculum. And I think it went down to like 20% for middle school curriculum was upgraded every 10 years. And for secondary, I think only 12% of districts upgrade their secondary curriculum every, I mean, that's why you see some of the social studies books here at the high school that were, they start in the seventies.
My memory loss just came back, because you just nailed it. And how many times have all of us gotten the phone calls, either a textbook or even just an English book, where the kids have to turn them in at the end of the class, because there aren't enough.
Correct.
To let them keep, you know, even like, you know, To Kill a Mockingbird or whatever, you know, whatever, you know, whatever.
Our teachers are running to a copy machine to make copies.
Right, exactly. So I guess those issues being addressed in that 9.2, because I would not, I don't wanna go back to the days where the teachers are having to run off, you know, all this. I know that some materials are online, and, and so I don't wanna say that that's inappropriate. That is appropriate, you know, using online resources, absolutely. But when, when, when we have a hard copy or a book or whatever you, that has to now be shared, because we don't have enough, are the resources being spent, so that that is not happening? Because I do not, I can't stand that, when I hear, you know, Easton, oh, those kids all have the books, you know, to take home, but Brockton, oh, no, we gotta share them, sorry. Well, this is what I'm talking about, so, so are we, you know, are we on the same page here? Or is, or are the kids still this year gonna have to share books, and the teachers have to? Where are we with that?
About, it all has to be upgraded. I mean, there's still kids, some kids sharing books, absolutely, yep.
But, but so, so there isn't the money to address that issue yet?
Right in here, that 9.2 million, yep.
So, so we aren't gonna have that problem then, because of this money?
Well, at the end, I mean, it's not gonna be done in two weeks.
Oh, no, I get, I get that, I'm not expecting a date. No, but I'm just saying, we're.
Absolutely, with that money.
If you say to me, well, no, we need, we need three more million dollars to do that, okay, then that 18 million's gotta go down by three million. You know what I mean, to get it to the resources.
Out of that 9.2, like, if there's a situation where, so this can be adjusted at any time. So basically, these, you know, so if we find out, if, so if teachers pilot a curriculum and say, we want this one, it's a million dollars more, then we just move the money. The 18, you move a couple million over, back over here, that's allowed by the state. Again, this is basically, you know, we have to provide them with rough numbers of where we think we should be. You know, the 9.2 is a lot, and again, most of that's gonna be based in curriculum and professional development, but money, this money can't move, because you have to spend this 20%. But those two areas, absolutely, we can't.
So I, I just, I think my point's been made clear, and I'm repeating myself, just that I want the kids to have the resources they need. I don't want this, this, this second-class feeling of parents and students that they have to share books when, you know, Abington, Bridgewater, whatever, all the different towns, they get to take their books home, and they have enough for everybody. I, that is not going to continue to happen when we have this kind of money coming into the district. So we're on the same page here?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, we're on the same page.
I'm over and out, I'm done.
We're on the same page, we just have to also not miss opportunities. It's balance, right, like always, it's balance, right? We can do some facilities upgrades, but we may find we have to skip some upgrades and shift some money, but. But certainly, we don't wanna lose the opportunity, because the learning environment, obviously, is important too.
We still have the Student Opportunity Act money coming in, that can address also curriculum, staffing. Student Opportunity Act money cannot address facility woes.
Right.
You know, so that's, that's where you gotta play that balance, is, you know, this, this 9.2, when we do our budget for next year, if, you know, you can put more money in there through the Student Opportunity Act, same with the 6.8, you can't with facilities, is my point.
Right.
Right, just as, our, our, our good friend John Jerome, we used to always say, we're gonna supplant money from here, in order to balance it and make it work for there, okay? He was a master at it.
Absolutely.
So, so I just wanna make sure that we're.
That's who taught Aldo.
Right, well, we're balancing enough to put towards the facilities, but yet, we are taking care of the resources, the books, et cetera, et cetera, that the kids need to be, have a first-rate education and not feel that they are getting a shared, you know, whatever, you know, resource, as, as compared to other districts surrounding this community. We should be getting, giving our kids the same, at least the same, at least the same.
Well, that's the whole issue of equity in education, right? Zip code's not supposed to matter.
Right, and we're getting the money this year to do it, so we gotta do it.
Same opportunities, no matter where you live, so. Anybody else? Mr. Sullivan?
Yes, Mike, I was, I was thinking about not middle school. You're using it now as a virtual?
Just, 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 just for this year?
Well, that's what I was driving.
Yeah, no, just, that, that, that won't be, that won't be, they won't be there next year for the virtual school, because we're adding the last grade back in.
The eighth graders will come in.
Yep, so those rooms that they're using for virtual, you're adding the sixth grade, so you'll have sixth, seventh, and eighth there next year. So those are, the rooms they're using now are the last bank of rooms that we have to renovate. So that's, and some of that money's in there for the.
Do you have another place in mind to put them?
Well, we have a, we have a place in mind that we're gonna try to figure out, and we, Aldo, I think Aldo's will probably come back here to Facility Subcommittee soon to put in a request for an RFP to lease some space, and then hopefully, you know, we could look into, at some point, maybe buying it. But again, we have to put some stuff together before we can come to you with that. But you're right, we need to find some space for the virtual school. The, the bank building, which we thought, you know, at the time would work, because it was gonna be so small, but now, virtual school has to be staffed with about 20 staff members, just no, there's just not enough room to be able to have all the virtual teachers there, so we do, we are gonna have to find a space for next year.
Mike, I was just thinking about one of your bullet points up there, the dropout rate.
Yep.
Could you consider that virtual school as a prevention for dropout?
Oh, yeah, that could be one place where we lead kids to the ver, yeah, that's another pathway. So basically, the Key Center, the Edison Academy, the Promise School, and the Virtual School are all different pathways that we could help prevent dropouts. We can refer kids to that.
One more quick question, the, you were talking about full day pre-k, we have both now, half and?
Yeah, we both half and full, yep.
Will you supply transportation on the full day?
Yes, yep, we do, we do for both, half and full day, we provide transportation.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, anybody else on this item? Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. One, one suggestion I would have is, at the middle schools, the old junior highs, in the auditorium, just spend some money on the auditoriums at the respective schools. I mean, they're in tough shape, I mean, they're, they're worn, right? So when we're talking about healthy and safe school environments, we need to incorporate, really doing a deep dive.
Yep.
We have a great facilities team here, and I know Dr. Carbs and his organization is really going at that, but I was at one of the middle schools recently, and I'm like, looks the same when I was here in, in '82. So, you know, I know, I know Mike and his team are really looking at this, but it's something we really just have to common sense approach on some of these things, so, thank you.
All right, anybody else on this item, before we move on? Okay, as we move on to the next items, I do wanna remind everybody that we are up against a somewhat hard stop of our full committee meeting.
And we can move some items to the next.
Right, and we may even have to push something off to the next meeting, but let's keep going. So just try and be, you know, brief and direct in your, in your comments, so we can keep things moving. You know, even I have a few things, but I'm gonna just email Mike, you know, at a later date to ask those questions. All right, so Transportation Financial Update, Mr. Petronio?
Aldo, what's in, you gave it out, right? Oh, it's the one with the yellow on the to, yellow and blue on the top.
Good evening, here's the, the page I handed out says Transportation Department on the very top. So Mr. Minicello asked at the last meeting for an update to basically see, now that we've started the year, are we on budget to still see our, some savings in taking this on? So the column on the left is the budget, and the column on the right is the actual. And very down at the bottom, I've got, you know, pretty much what we're below budget. So the fact that we didn't end up renting a warehouse, you know, bus terminal for about $600,000 right away, that gave us a little bit of a savings. So I'm projecting right now at least the $338,000 savings this year. And remember, that was over and above roughly a $600,000 savings, just by taking it on ourselves. So what that means to me is, we're still on budget for our savings of, you know, a little over half a million dollars this year. So, so far, everything's going smooth, we have staff in place, and as we find a location to settle in on, we'll be able to take on the rest of our buses and continue this progress. We, we started out a little rough this year, because there weren't enough drivers, there was none available anywhere in the state, and the National Guard, actually, are helping us right now with our runs. But since the unemployment ran out back in September, we have, we've taken, taken in close to 300, 300 applications, and of those, we've got more than a dozen that are fully licensed drivers that are going through the process right now to be hired. So hopefully, in another two weeks, we'll have our full contingent of drivers that we need for this school year, and then we're gonna begin training drivers for the fall, when we hopefully take over the rest of our routes ourselves and run our system. So, and in doing so, I think we'll continue to see the savings in money. The very bottom of the sheet, projected, we still have for a student that handles our larger buses and a few small buses. So I projected a figure of about a 10% increase, and it came in a little bit more than that, but we're still, even though it's costing us maybe 17,000 more for the year, we're still on budget with that. So overall, I think we're doing well. Any questions?
Mr. Sullivan?
Thank you, Aldo. I just had a question on the, the second part, the second half of the buses.
Yes.
Are you gonna order those in January, the, the second half?
Hopefully, January, February. Right now, we're, Troy, you know, the CFO of the city, and myself, we're looking at all of our different funding streams that we have in, so we're seeing what's allowable under what grants that we can use to actually purchase buses. So some of the S or funds, we'd like to put towards it, and then I'm also looking at other savings within this account to see how we can purchase our buses, so.
There is a plan in place to get the, the rest of them?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else on this matter?
Aldo, can you also speak of, because I, when I met with Transportation today, there was a situation where we're actually getting requests now to rent our buses out?
Well, because so many other schools, bus companies.
Not, not to rent them out, to have other people drive them, but actually, how we used to call Lucini and.
Right, to do runs.
Because for a student couldn't cover some of our field trips, we'd actually have to rent from them. So now, we're getting some school systems coming to us, saying, I can't get a bus for this field trip, can you, can we pay your fee to, you know, which is basically money, a ma, you know, another way for us to make money off of this.
Exactly, because we've been able to take care of our JRTC, our, most of our athletic activities right now. We're working with community schools, because they have all their programs coming up, so we're factoring all those in. But as we get the rest of the buses on board, and we have this contingent of drivers, I mean, you know, from five to eight at night, when there's sporting activities going on for other schools and districts, we have drivers that wanna work, we just charge out and add our percentage on for our costs, and we'll basically be able to bring revenue in.
And if I remember right, that was part of where we were gonna have some of the savings, was the fact that we were gonna save on that, right? I mean, we have, you know, our day-to-day transporting to and from school, but also all the extracurriculars, now that we don't have to contract out. You know, it was $92,000 a bus from for a student, and, oh, you need athletic transportation, you need field trips, transportation, that's extra.
Exactly.
Those extras go away.
Exactly. So those, right, the.
Right, yeah.
Some of that money is under net school spending, so we're just gonna do journal adjustments between non and, and net, so that we still count them under net school spending, because it counts towards our spending, but it's gonna be at a much lower cost.
Right, makes sense. Any other members have questions on this? Mr. Minicello?
The financial plan looks, looks great in terms of rollout and, and implementation. How are we doing with regard to service to the kids in the, you know, the neighborhoods and improving it? Because obviously, there were some, you know, glitches. Where are we at with the improvement from the first day of school to today?
After the first week, we had, you know, many improvements, because again, the drivers are getting to know the routes, getting to know the parents, and since then, it's gotten better and better, because we've added drivers. Like I said, the National Guard came in. We began, you know, probably about 15 drivers short of what we needed, so instead of a 30-minute route, they were doing 55-minute routes. So, and we also had a lot of traffic situations, because beginning of school, everybody's driving their, their children to school. You know, the first few days, their parents were concerned about COVID, so they didn't want them on the buses. But I think now that's calmed down, so we've got a much better traffic flow at all our schools, so that's helped quite a bit.
Wonderful, okay. Mr. Mayor, you can report to the City Council that budgetarily, the school department's doing their thing with the monies that were allocated, so that's good news for the city.
I'll let you report that to them.
Oh, yeah. All right, yeah, I mean, no, this whole thing was a, a big savings for the city, and that, that's a city-side expense, so that really is a benefit to the, to the, that side of the ledger, as I like to say. All right, so here's the thing, on our next item, item number three, we really need to give that more than the seven minutes that we've got left to start our next meeting. So what I'd like to do is ask for a motion to delay this item to our next Finance Subcommittee.
Motion to table to the next Finance Subcommittee meeting, the number three, FY '22 additional positions.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to delay item number, or to table item number three to the next Finance Subcommittee, seconded, or made by Mr. Minicello, seconded by Mrs. Sullivan, all in favor. Aye, motion carries. Item number four, do we have any other business for finance this evening before we adjourn? Seeing none, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Sullivan, seconded by Ms. Asak, all in favor, aye. Finance is adjourned.